Clerk, call the roll.
Councilman Cazarelli.
Here.
DePena?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Notori? Ravel?
Here.
Schimmelberg? Mayor Maham?
Here. Just to let everybody know, our official township clerk is not here today. Our deputy stepping in. She has big shoes to fill, but we know she can do it. Sunshine notice.
First name? Requirements of an Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was published in Thursday's July 1st, 2021 editions of the Bellevle Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted to the Bellevle Town Hall bulletin board, and copies are on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the rest of the notice. Next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. To our right. I.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have presentations. The first item is the Bellevle baseball team. We did just shut the door and locked them in the meeting. A baseball team could be a little loud, so we had to shut the door initially.
Go down and read from there.
Just make sure we speak into that microphone if we can.
Good.
We're going to invite the baseball team up. Come on right up, guys. You're going to be right here in the front, okay? They all got quiet all of a sudden. As they're coming in, we're going to have our deputy mayor, Ms. Naomi DePena, read a proclamation. She's going to be assisted by Councilman Graziano. No, you can wait for the command. I'm just narrating them. I'm just narrating what's happening. Thank you to all the parents who brought your children out today. I'm going to hand it down to Deputy Mayor DePena to read the proclamation.
Great. Resolved by the Municipal Council of Bellevle, New Jersey. Whereas the Bellevle High School 2021 baseball team won the High School Development League Championship in the 16U Division, and whereas the mayor and municipal find it fitting to honor these young men of the Bellevle High School 2021 baseball team who have displayed their dedication, commitment, and perseverance, and through their efforts, did an outstanding job and are richly deserving of congratulations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of township of Bellevle recognized the excellence and devotion exhibited by Bellevle High School 2021 baseball team players Jake Santos, Alan Martinez, Derek Gonzalez. It's okay, you can shout for them, Mama. Do it. Derek Gonzalez, AJ Clinigan, Brian Planko, Dominic Groliman, Gabe Byen, Aiden Carrero, Rafi Matos, James Monroy, Gabriel Santiago, Joe Gancion, Marino Perez, Luis de Leon, and Ariance Paulino, as well as their coaches Albert Carrero and Albert Santos. And be it further resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellevle commend the Bellevle High School 2021 baseball team, high school summer development league 16U division champions, and wish continued success in the years to come to its team players and coaches. Congratulations. Each one of you guys.
Just going to try and gather everybody to post for a picture if we can. Don't cut my head off. Looks good. One more round of applause then. That's, you're right, by the way. You're right. Now I know why you read it. Because I would have, one never dared to say the names. And you read every name.
Listen, their parents are here.
She messed up the one Italian.
Of course I did, right? I was talking about that, right? I knew it.
We're just going to give them a minute or so to exit the room. I'm not sure they want to stay in this heat box that we're all in right now. Thank you. Thank you again.
That was one minute notice.
Those of you who are watching on video, it is extremely hot in this room, and it's about 10 degrees cooler than it was two hours ago when we had about 60 people in here for 12 different promotions. So the room is cooling down. It's still very warm, though. Just going to ask, yep, we are shutting that door. Good. Okay, the next item on our agenda is another presentation to the family of Thomas McCurney. And I believe Councilman Graziano. Councilman Cazarelli, how's that one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, unfortunately, last week Bellevle and Nutley lost a great, great man, Tom McHenry. He was both, he represented both Bellevle and Nutley in, you know, different capacities, working in Nutley, but he always, he always took care of Bellevle. He was the chairman of the Nutley Irish Parade, but every year for the last dozen years, there was Bellevle honorees in the parade. So he always, always did the right thing, always took care of Bellevle and Nutley, and we just have a little proclamation here for his friends and family. So whereas the township of Bellevle lost a former resident, Thomas McHenry, when he departed this life on September 5th, 2021. Tom was born and raised in Bellevle and lived in Nutley for over 30 years. Tom was employed by the township of Nutley since 2001 and was the loving father of three children who always came first. Tom was the president of the Nutley Irish American Association for the past 15 years and was a trustee of the association for 16 years. During his presidency of the Nutley Irish, Tom grew the organization into one of the largest in this state, with the number of members doubling in size during his leadership. Tom also had the distinguished honor of being chosen by Insider New Jersey as one of New Jersey's top Irish-American leaders. Whereas Thomas McHenry is survived by his children and his family, Sarah McHenry, Thomas McHenry, Colleen McHenry, Maureen McNish, Joe McNish, and Philomena McHenry Selgado. Tom is also survived by his soulmate, Colleen Nielsen. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellevle on behalf of his citizens hereby extends its sincere condolences to his bereaved family on their great loss. So if someone wants to come up and get the plaque and say a few words. Also, also, the Nutley Irish is accepting donations in their charity in memory of Tom and his name, so if anyone ever cares to make a donation to the Nutley Irish in his name, it's going to go to scholarships and a few different things around Bellevle and Nutley.
We just can't tell you how much we appreciate this amazing honor, and it puts us all at rest knowing that Uncle Tommy to me and Brother Tommy to Joe here, that he was such an influence in all of our lives, and we should all live by his example, which is to be grateful for every single breath, every single moment, and every single day. So we just appreciate this so much, and we know that he's looking down on all of us tonight and is so proud of this honor, as well as all of the honors he had in his life.
Okay, so next item on our agenda is, unfortunately, is... The next item on our agenda is executive session. We were originally scheduled to go into executive session for two different topics that the manager put on. That was personnel and contract negotiations. However, we're only going into executive session for the contract negotiations, correct?
That's correct.
The personnel matter will be discussed in public when executive session is over. Correct or no?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay, so I need a motion to enter executive session. Unfortunately, I do need to clear the room. We have a motion made in second for executive session. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori? Ravel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Maham?
Yes. We just lost the screen. A little unique situation. We went, we had posted, let me do it this way. We had posted our agenda that we had two different conversations to be had while we were in executive. Those conversations were both, one was personnel and two was contract negotiations. As most of you know that are here, and anybody watching online, live or later, typically matters of personnel are always discussed in executive session. There's a procedure that has to be followed by the government. We are advised by our manager and our attorney how to do that. Anytime personnel is, is happening in executive session, those employees have a right to know they're being discussed, and two, they have the option to whether or not that conversation happens in executive session or it happens in, during the public meeting. So this is new territory for me and new territory, I think, for everybody up here, but we're basically taking a discussion that was going to be done in executive session, which was personnel, and those employees have asked us to have that conversation in public. It's a little odd because we're going to have this conversation with members of the public here and with a camera going and with people watching on TV, but you have to understand this is a conversation in and between us and our administration, our professionals. So bear with us because before we go into the next portion of the agenda, which is discussions, we still have a matter of personnel to deal with, and it will be discussed here in public. So without further ado, I'm going to now hand it over to the manager. Again, this is uncharted territory for us all, so just bear with us. I'm going to hand it over to the town manager.
Sure. So members of the council, Mark and I were asked to review the developer's escrow account, which is kept down in the finance department and processed by the finance department. Upon the initial review of the reviewing of the escrow account, we saw that there was a conflict of three employees receiving compensation based on being reimbursed for attending meetings, which there is no, there's no public authorization via ordinance or resolution to reimburse. So we went back, and again, the review is not completed yet, but we started going back. I think we're back maybe two years at this point doing totals as far as how many checks were issued out of the escrow account that may have been and could continue to be in conflict with a ordinance and a resolution. There is a resolution that this governing body passed on August of 2019. That resolution specifically identifies whether it's the construction official, zoning officer, and acting in the capacity of planning director, a stipend that this governing body passed and issued a stipend, I'm just going to round off numbers, say $670 a month, $17,000 a year. So that, that is by resolution that those monies are to be paid to the construction official. Besides that, there have been checks issued for attending meetings. So that resolution of 2000, August of 2019...
Can I just jump in for once? Because this is, just so members of council know, this is a conversation. You had mentioned reimbursement. I've seen probably what you've seen. I, I'm not, I'm not sure what's being reimbursed. I thought it was being billed for services rendered.
Invoices, invoices submitted, that invoices submitted for meetings attended. If that's, I use the word reimbursement.
Definitely not reimbursement.
Okay.
The reimbursement, you lay money out, you get paid back.
Okay, so I stand to be corrected. So invoices were submitted to the finance department, which those invoices were paid out of the escrow account, which there is no tool, there's no resolution, there's no ordinance to pay a secretary to attend a work meeting or the construction official to attend special meetings or work meetings.
Question, are these regular meetings or special?
So the resolution, specific, the of August of 2019 specifically identifies all meetings, okay? So the compensation, the additional compensation to the construction official is based on the resolution to attend all meetings. But the, sort of sum up, the resolution says specifically special, let's just say, special planning board meetings, subcommittee meetings. The resolution says you're being compensated $17,000 plus for those meetings, yet you're telling me invoices have been typed up and money has been withdrawn for the same exact meetings. Invoices have been submitted to the finance department. Checks have been issued out of the...
For the same exact meeting, for the same exact meeting that we already know is being paid through an extra stipend.
That's it.
Sounds serious to me.
Again...
How serious do you think it is?
I don't know. Because we're, Mark and I are still reviewing the whole, again, part, part of our later conversation is to correct some of the procedures that aren't being followed.
Agreed.
And I think when we get to that portion of the meeting and realize that via past practice or whatever the result may be, we need to, and when I say we, we have to include the planning board and the zoning board, we need to make some, some corrections, obviously.
So based on past practice, we've been doing this for a while?
I, I don't know how far back, but we're back probably, I know for sure, two years, maybe three, four, five, that's what we're going to find. That's what the review is going to show us.
No, I, I kind of remember that myself over time, that that's what we kind of did, but...
So the practice that I'd like to see is that we pay somebody for a service and they don't go and take additional money for the same service. I mean, that's, I think, the practice that I'd like to see. I mean, I don't, I guess I care much about past practice if it was wrong.
No, no, but, but we approve, you can't go back and say, hey, we did this, we approved this, and it was okay. The auditors saw it, they were okay with it, our CFO was okay with it.
Well, I don't think we approved invoices typed up.
Well, our CFO did. Theoretically, that was the person in charge, and our auditors did look at that. So if we need to, if we need to clarify from this point on, that's a whole nother trip there, you know?
That's a question.
That's, that's a question to me.
That's a question. Does the money come out of?
Comes out escrow.
So is the escrow signed off by the CFO or is it signed off by who?
Anthony's name is on the check, CFO's name's checked on the...
Yeah, so just so that we clearly paint the, the correct picture of what took place because certainly I don't want anyone to point a finger at, at Kim. The procedure that's in place, or was in place up until this initial review, was that professionals, secretaries, construction officials would take an invoice and submit it to the finance department who matched it up to the meeting or to the development, and those checks were issued with a stamp. Now, this practice has been going on before we had Judith. Joe was in charge of the, the escrow account, so then if I'm, and again, the review is not totally complete because I haven't even spoken to Judith, but I'm going to tell you, Joe was doing it, right? Joe was, we never, we didn't have a CFO, we didn't have a full-time CFO. So at one point, Joe was in charge, then...
Yeah, but you don't know how long this goes back.
I do not.
So being that Joe was here or not here, it wouldn't matter if it only started, say, in the last two years or so, or a year or so.
If the review says that it only started in the last two years, absolutely.
I, I, as you know, I filed an open request. Review is pretty easy. I mean, you, you just look. It's, I had sent you an email three weeks ago. I, I, what, what is the review process? What, I mean, it's very easy for me. I, I filed an open request and I could see. So what, what more time or what's the next step?
I don't, I don't want to put a time limit on it, but I think when we get to the next topic, which we're keeping the topic separate, and I have no problem keeping the topic separate, but I think when we get to the next topic, it's going to be quite clear that bills are being paid without proper authorization. And, and again...
Or, or, without proper authorization implies like the bills are okay to be paid, there's just no authorization.
No, I didn't say that.
I think we're talking about something a little different that...
I didn't say that.
Inappropriately being invoiced and appropriately being paid. It's a big difference.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, I had a question in regards to that. It, it kind of aligns with what he's saying. I mean, I'm a small business owner and I think of it as if I'm paying someone their salary and they're also billing. That's what I'm understanding, right? They're billing for the same services that they've already rendered. Now, is there anywhere in, in the ordinance where it mentions a limit of, of meetings where people may have been under the impression that they had a limit and after that, they can bill after that?
No. So the, and I refer to it as the ordinance that this council passed in August of 2019, specifically identifies all the meetings, and it says that...
Resolution.
I'm sorry. I apologize. That is the resolution.
Resolution, okay.
There is an ordinance that is prior to that, that refers to things that are not being done. That ordinance goes back to, I could give you the date, I'll have a copy of it somewhere, but it's a very old ordinance. Give me a second, I could tell you. That ordinance goes back to...
I mean, I don't think I need the time.
Yeah, I believe 1978. And I, and again, that's part of the review is going to tell us. And again, what the ordinance of, and let's just round it off, what that ordinance says is not being done, and I think that's...
That's the procedures related.
The next part we're going to address.
It's really, for anybody that's paying attention, listening or watching here, it, it's fairly, in my opinion, it's fairly black and white. We have a resolution authorizing a stipend. That stipend is for X, Y, and Z services, including X, Y, and Z meetings, including specifically saying after hour meetings. That stipend is $17,000 and change. That employee's receiving that stipend, but that employee is still creating invoices, walking them down to the finance department and taking money for the same meetings he is already being paid the stipend for. In a nutshell, correct me if I misspoke.
No, the, the initial review clearly shows that, yes.
Okay. That's, I mean, that's pretty troubling. I don't know why more people aren't outraged at that, but it's, it's pretty troubling.
It just sounds like to me that there's been some miscommunication here and...
Yeah, miscommunication.
And Michael, let me, let me finish, please.
Yeah.
We need to clarify it and make sure that it doesn't happen again. I mean, the whole point for me is, if we've identified a problem, then we need to find that problem and find a way to move forward.
Typing up an invoice or something you already did, walking it down, getting a check is not a miscommunication.
But if we've been doing this for, for years, and this is the way it's been doing, you know, then, and, and we've been doing it for at least two years, so...
We?
Yeah, we, we're part of this whole puzzle.
Oh, I am not part of this puzzle.
No, you're not part of anything that takes responsibility.
No, because I'm actually...
Let's be serious. You just take credit, no responsibility.
Right, and speaking of taking credit, thank you for teeing that up.
And oh, by the way, let's take credit for the fourth phase of the stadium project, which is not the first phase of the stadium project. Yeah, like, you know, this is what pisses me off.
Can we stick to this topic?
Yeah, let's stick to it.
Thanks.
Talking about responsibility, Councilman, I will take responsibility for, first, looking into this matter. I will take responsibility for providing the information to the manager, and I will take responsibility for us uncovering what we've uncovered. You want to call it past practice for some strange reason. You want to say we've always done it that way.
It's not a strange reason.
You did say that.
We've been doing this.
Oh, so it's okay.
It's something, it's something that we need to clarify then and say it's wrong. Okay, we're going to say now it's wrong, so let's, let's figure it out.
Getting paid twice, getting paid twice is wrong? It's just wrong? No, can't say it. Get on the record.
Mike, on the record is if we've made a mistake as a township, then we need to correct it. You know, if, if you want to go after somebody in particular, that's your prerogative. If you want to go after somebody in particular, that's your prerogative, and you've been doing this for freaking three years.
Got it.
So stop it.
So many, many years ago, when our recreation director, many years ago, was taking money out of a fund, was that a mistake? Was that a miscommunication?
Well, by the way, he created that fund and he created an account, and that's how he did it.
Right, but was that a miscommunication?
It's not, it's not the same thing. It's definitely not the same thing.
All right, so...
This is stuff that we've, we've basically had supervision over through our CFO.
So being that Anthony kind of brought up the reason why race notices were being issued, and clearly we have at least one council member that just wants to put this under the rug.
Clearly that's wrong, Mike. Clearly what I want to do is, is get to a point where we stop harassing the business people and, and just move forward. That's, that's the issue. If we need to clarify this, Mike, yes, I agree with that. We need to come forward, but I, I think that you've shown over the course of time, in fact, we just went through an investigation that cost us $40,000, you know, going after the same person. Stop. Please stop this.
So that was actually, that was actually a private matter that was never discussed publicly.
Well, good.
But being that Councilman Ravel brought it up, it did cost $40,000 to actually say, I did nothing wrong.
If I didn't say that, they said we need to follow best practices, and I don't perceive this as best practices.
Okay, good. So what I'm going to do now...
Then you and I are going to disagree on that one.
We are. So would, would, would getting to the bottom of it include discipline, do you think, Councilman? Or no, just...
You know, I really, I really can't tell, Mike, because that seems to be all you're interested in.
Got it.
Let's discipline and hurt people.
So what I'm going to do now, since I think we're getting a little bit of different opinions here...
Opinions, yeah, we're going to get different opinions.
Because Councilman Ravel, you have not seen any of the data, to the best of my ability. You haven't seen the invoices. You haven't reviewed anything.
Mike, you opened all this stuff, you did all this stuff.
I did.
Nobody, nobody knew about it till now.
So therefore, I'm going to just give a nice summary. I think the manager did an okay job. I think some of us up here...
Did a good job, myself.
I think some of us here are just trying to say, well, let's just fix this administratively, but I'm going to actually get into it a little bit. Is that okay?
Your prerogative.
It is. So as mayor and a member of the township budget committee, especially because of all the development happening, I have been curious about the policies and procedures surrounding a very specific bank account called the developer escrow account. In January 2021, I formally asked, this went back to January, by the way, in January 2021, I formally asked the township manager for documentation regarding this account. Eight months later, after putting into context other information that I gathered, I believe there needs to be a full forensic audit of these accounts. Basically, for the general public listening, developers looking to do business in Bellevle make an application to either our planning board or our zoning board, and they, they then place escrow monies in an account pursuant to state statute and township ordinances. Those funds, according to the state statute, should only be used for payment to outside professionals and consultants and for reimbursement to the township for municipal professionals. In essence, the outside professionals are professionals who have previously been qualified by the township, who, who then have an established business relationship with the township, such as our engineers, redevelopment council, and planners. They're all paid from these escrow accounts as they perform their professional services on behalf of the township. It should also be noted, when these outside professionals are qualified via the public RFP process, their fee structure is noted and approved. The state statute is very clear. Only outside professionals and consultants and reimbursement to the township for salary of municipal professionals are permitted to be paid out of these escrow accounts. Additionally, the state statute specifically states that applicant's escrow shall not be billed for any municipal clerical or administrative functions. Quote directly from the state statute. Not satisfied with the results of my email question from January 2021, I was then forced to file an open request for the account documentation. I received that information several weeks ago, and today I believe I now have evidence that invoices for professional services have been typed up from within town hall and provided to the finance department. Based on those invoices, checks were cut with the manager's signature stamped on them, as he mentioned before. These actions circumvent all known financial checks and balances within the township. No authority exists for such a thing. Arbitrary dollar amounts were selected as a fee structure. It should be noted that one employee in question, Mr. DiLorenzo, is already being compensated $17,292 above his current municipal pay of $173,000 to perform various services and functions on behalf of the planning board and zoning boards. The money being extracted from this account is over and above that additional compensation. Mr. DiLorenzo is our construction code official, to which he receives a municipal salary of $173,000. Mr. DiLorenzo is also our zoning officer, and according to all of our local ordinances, he's not supposed to receive any additional compensation for those services. He does perform some duties as planning director, and he is already receiving an extra stipend of $17,292 per year for services he renders outside his normal workday. In fact, there is a resolution which we mentioned before, authorizing the stipend of the extra $17,000 a year for these services. The resolution clearly states, the mayor and the township council, the township of Bellevle acknowledge that some of these duties are performed by Frank DiLorenzo outside his regular workday, and therefore he should be compensated by the same. Those duties, he's already being compensated for, an extra $17,000. An extra $17,292 above the $193,000 a year are outlined in that resolution. That paragraph actually reads, whereas the mayor, the township council wish to ensure that Frank Di Lorenzo is compensated for performing his duties, such as receiving, processing, conducting initial intake for all development applications to the planning board, receiving, processing, conducting all initial intake of development applications under any redevelopment plan, provide responses to development applications for compliance, conduct a determination of completeness, and respond to applicants regarding any omissions or deficiencies, certify the completeness to the appropriate board, attend and participate in all regularly scheduled meetings at a planning board, attend and participate in all special meetings at a planning board, meet with developers to discuss applications pending in front of the planning board, attend and participate in developer meetings, and attend all subcommittee meetings pertaining to development projects. Yet, even though he's being compensated for planning board special meetings, planning board subcommittee meetings, even after hour meetings, this documentation shows that he regularly created his own invoices for $750 for special planning board meetings, invoices for $200 for planning board subcommittee meetings. He created his own fee structure, typed up invoices, and received checks totaling thousands of dollars. I immediately contacted the township manager and I demanded an investigation. Clearly, the manager thought this was warranted and a rice notice for discussion was had. These are several invoices totaling thousands of dollars that have been typed up in town hall for arbitrary dollar amounts that are not part of any of our ordinances. $200 for a special meeting, a subcommittee meeting, $750 for subcommittee meetings, I'm sorry, for special planning board meetings, everything to which he was already being compensated for an additional $17,000. Invoices typed up in this building, walked downstairs, checks cut, and money deposited. I don't think this is a miscommunication. I would ask the township manager to continue investigating this. I don't know why three weeks wasn't already enough, but I do ask him to continue investigating this and/or decide whether it needs to be done by outside agencies. Mr. Manager, anything else?
Just, just as a clarification, counsel?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Why didn't we do this with an ordinance rather than a resolution? Because to me, on my understanding, with certain resolutions, they're only good for like a year.
Um, frankly, we are in private, we're in public--
Okay, never mind, never mind.
If I tell you that, I will violate my lawyer-client privilege.
Okay.
I can't do that.
Never mind.
I bet a lot of people are hearing that for the first time. This is something that I've been looking at for a long time. It's clear, it's obvious. We have somebody being compensated to do X, Y, and Z. That compensation includes special meetings, subcommittee meetings, and after hours meetings. We then have somebody typing up invoices in this building, walking downstairs, creating arbitrary dollar amounts for $750 or to-- What if he wanted $2,000 for a subcommittee meeting? What if he wanted $1,250? They're literally, he's literally created his own invoices, his own fee structure, typed them up on our computers probably up on the third floor, walked downstairs and got checks for services he's already being additionally compensated for. Total compensation, $189,000 before you add up all these invoices. I only have six months' worth of invoices, but by the way. $189,000 legitimately before you add up these invoices for arbitrary dollar amounts. Is it a miscommunication, Councilman, to make up your own fee structure?
Mike, I'm saying we need to clarify it and we need to move forward. That's your prerogative. You want to sit here and give me this diatribe, continue on. But you know what, we haven't resolved squat.
Oh, I think we've resolved stuff. I think now the public knows, the manager knows, I think the administration knows, that we have an employee in here typing up his own invoices, walking downstairs, bypassing every single checks and balances, not being paid in this payroll, but by the way, but just getting a check on the side and depositing it for services he's already being paid for. You, Councilman, as a steward of this township, should be shocked by that. You should be outraged.
I agree.
And instead of trying to tell me it's a clerical error, you should be outraged.
That we should be shocked, but then--
Okay.
You need to take responsibility too, because you are the head of this council. You are the man. So, you know what?
I'm the one that's investigated.
And it's been going on for years, Mike. It's been going on for years, while you, we're the mayor. Come on, stop.
No, it's my fault.
Well, hey, nothing's your fault, Mike.
I'll turn myself in with everybody else.
Turn yourself in, because you should.
My fault, got it.
Anyway, let's move forward, man.
So Tommy, anything?
No, I just soaking this all in right now.
Okay.
I did want to ask the manager, and thank you, Mayor, for providing the information. Obviously, there's a lot for us to process, and I understand that emotions run high when we have to make decisions that involve identifying what actually happened and who-- This is, I don't think it's about blaming and finding fault, but understanding how can we be better? And how can we make our, you know, what we, we have a responsibility to the township to manage well and to establish policies that can be followed so things like this don't happen. So to the manager, I understand that you're both still in this process of investigation. But as of now, we have a level of information, what happens with this? Where do we go from here?
So from--
In other towns, there'd be a criminal investigation, in my opinion, but--
So from procedural point, which we will discuss, because, and again, I just want to point out one, emphasize one thing that the mayor said. Mayor said, and he used the word checks and balance. I think what we're gonna find out in this process and possibly at the next conversation, there is no checks and balance, or there were no checks and balances--
Which is highly susceptible to fraud.
Again, when we talk about the next topic, the planning board and the zoning board have to, and they have a fiduciary responsibility to approve every single invoice. They have never, to the best of my knowledge, and again, the review is nowhere near complete, but to the best of my knowledge, none of the, there has been no checks and balances at all, and that's a problem. So, so just for you to know and for taxpayers to know, when this was brought to my attention on that day, I have suspended the escrow account. So no one is being paid out of the escrow account. Whether you're an attorney, whether you're a court stenographer, whether you're an engineer, a planner, no one will be paid until we have checks and balances in place. It's unfortunate that we found out, the way we found out, that there are no checks and balances. But I think, again, the part B of this conversation, when we discuss procedures, or I should say procedures that are not being followed, we're gonna find out that they have a fiduciary responsibility to approve every invoice, and they haven't approved any invoices.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and that is what we will do moving forward. My question is to what just happened, right? There is, my calculations just briefly, right? We're talking about 750, 200, and I don't know how many meetings a month we're talking about, but we have established that it goes back at least back to two years. So my question is, from here, you know, is there a responsibility for someone to pay this money back? Is there a responsibility?
There very well may be. I mean--
Okay.
At the conclusion of the review, and again, I just want to emphasize, you know, the town manager and the assistant town manager have worked in conjunction and have reviewed every personnel manner that has been before us in the last two years, regardless if it was police, fire, public works, or in this case, public employees. We have acted as one, use my 20-plus years' experience, my 20-plus years' experience. So I feel that we will, the review will come with a recommendation.
Absolutely, and I don't envy your job. I definitely know that this is a difficult process. However, I do think we have a big responsibility to the township to make sure that we do things right. And at the same time, that we review the policies so it doesn't happen again.
We need the same procedure in place.
Clearly preaching to the choir. My name is on a check that I've never seen, so obviously--
Absolutely, I mean, that's dangerous. Very dangerous.
Sure.
Those checks wouldn't have been seen if invoices weren't typed up. And I know we keep saying that there are no checks and balances. There are checks and balance. I mean, I have the ordinance here, which we're gonna get into in our discussion, but I have the ordinance here, which is our local ordinance. And it actually says that the zoning officer shall refer, and the zoning officer is supposed to be, being that checks and balances that everybody says doesn't exist, it's actually the duty of the zoning officer to distribute the materials to different professionals and--
I thought my one conversation and reading in one of them that the, and Steve certainly correct me if I'm wrong, because I know you and I discussed it. But doesn't the planning board and the zoning board, similar to the mayor and council, approve bill lists? Aren't they supposed to be voting on a bill list at each monthly meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
According to our ordinance, yes, to be presented to them by the zoning officer or--
Time out. So we do have, we do have a procedure in place, it's not being done. So my question is, if that zoning officer is supposed to be doing X, Y, and Z and not doing it, what are you gonna do about that?
Again, that would be part of the review and the conclusion and the recommendation.
Okay, understood. Because, I mean, it's easy to say the system is broken. This is not broken. There's somebody not doing their job. The job is supposed to be, it says it right here, the zoning officer does that stuff. The problem is, is the zoning officer is actually submitting invoices, getting paid.
I think when we discuss policies and procedures, we're gonna see that we do have to make some serious corrections.
Or you have to actually hold the employees accountable to do the tasks that the ordinance says they're supposed to be doing.
I don't want to make this more complicated and more confusing.
No, I don't mind, because I'll explain it.
But, okay, that's fine, but we did rise one employee for receiving pay to go to meetings, and they were getting some meetings, I think there were $150 of meetings. There's nothing in place that pays her $150. However, we do have a salary ordinance that says the planning board secretary gets $500 per meeting.
Per, no, and I'm not going that route, but it does say it's for the planning board meetings.
It says $500 per meeting, the salary.
Right.
So a planning board meeting, or a special planning board meeting, or a subcommittee meeting, it doesn't say that. So, so maybe she shouldn't have been getting paid $150, maybe she should have been getting $500, maybe. Because, again, and that's the part that I think when, the more we look into this, the more we have to, I think we have to correct that salary ordinance, because if it says $500 per meeting--
Let me ask you just a question. You sit in on our redevelopment meetings, right? The zoning officer is also there, the construction code official, same person. No invoices for those meetings. Why is there no, like, why is there no invoices for those meetings?
Are you asking me that question?
If you have an idea why. I mean, I'm sure you've talked to the employee about this in three weeks.
Never, never asked the employee the question of why he didn't submit--
For redevelopment, the means that we sit on, the redevelopment meetings.
Again, it's after hours. You're asking a question I don't have the answer to.
Why not make up a number of $1,125 for those meetings? Isn't odd that we're just making up arbitrary numbers and deciding which meetings we want to get paid for? You don't find that odd?
No, I have already presented everything that I've looked at to date so far.
Got it.
I clearly think that there has to be some corrections to the resolution, or to the ordinance, or the salary ordinance, whatever.
And/or if you find wrongdoing, I'm assuming you're gonna act on that wrongdoing.
Absolutely. And I think, I think one of the questions that Councilwoman Tepinia asked was, would one of the considerations be to pay the money back? And certainly that would obviously be one of the considerations.
I mean, can I submit invoices and get money, and then when I get caught, pay it back?
But I was answering a question--
No, I'm just, I'm asking you a new question. I'm on salary, I'm on salary for $7,000 a year. Why don't I just make up an invoice for our redevelopment me, we have a redevelopment meeting next Tuesday? We discuss developers, they have escrow accounts. Why don't I just type up an invoice and decide that I want to make $600 for redevelopment meetings, get paid, and then in a couple of years, if I get caught after thousands and thousands of dollars total up, I'll pay it back?
I don't--
Why don't I just, I would love that--
Because I don't even have the redevelopment--
I think you're sending a bad message to other employees by saying, well, if you get caught doing wrong, just you pay it back.
I don't know if the redevelopment committee is even recognized by our town ordinance. I don't, I don't, I don't know, they answered to that.
Subcommittee's really not, by the way.
I don't, I don't know. So the point I'm trying to say is, there's clearly, again, the review is not completed, but one of the considerations would be, to answer your question, there's a difference between a committee and a board. A board is created by ordinance, right? There's rules and policies and procedures in place for the planning board, zoning board, library board, all of that. For the redevelopment committee, to your credit, I think you developed it when you started bringing development into Bellevle, so I think that's a good thing. But I don't think the redevelopment committee is recognized anywhere--
Got it.
As any authority. I mean, I don't know if, we don't vote, there's no votes and things like that, I think we discussed in some--
Very informal.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I gave Councilman Graziano a chance, Ms. Burke? Naomi spoke, Vinnie? Steve? Okay, so with that being said, we're gonna move on to discussions. Dovetailing perfectly into this discussion is the explanation of developer fees and policies. So I have a, just so the public knows, there are two things that we're dealing with now. We're dealing with a state statute that says how developer fees are done. It's much like an attorney trust account. It's, it's got its own statute explaining how it's done. That's governed by the state. We then have a local ordinance--
Are you gonna refer to chapter 19?
Yeah, yeah, I'm getting there. I got 19 here.
Do you have copies for everyone? Because I think I have copies.
No. This was your presentation.
No, you put this on the agenda.
Explanation of developer fees policies from the township manager.
Who put it on the agenda, not me.
Well, yeah, but you're gonna explain it to us.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not the marked up copy. I don't think it is.
That's a quick picture.
So that's, I think that's what you're referring to, right?
We do have copies.
19, but do you also have, since we're handing out information, do you have the state statute?
I do, I don't know if I have--
I could put up my screen for everybody to read if they'd like, because I have it here. I'll point everybody to the highlighted portion that says, "The municipality approving authority shall not bill the applicant or charge any escrow account or deposit authorized in the subsection B of the section for any municipal or clerical administrative functions." So do you have this to hand out to everybody? No, okay. So we should definitely start with that, because that's local.
I have ordinance number 2240?
No, I'm looking for state statute.
Is an ordinance requiring applicants for development and developers to establish deposits of money in escrow? Is that the one you're referring to?
I'm referring to state statute title 40 and chapter 19, which you handed out. This is state, this is local, you handed out local. I just wanted everybody to be aware of the highlighted portion that literally says you cannot pay any money out of the escrow for clerical or municipal administrative functions. Yet, we just think it's an oversight. But we already had that discussion, so now let's talk about how we're gonna adhere to the state statute, which I think you could take this local ordinance, and it's not worth anything, because it can't supersede state statute. So any discussion really should start with the state statute, which actually initially talks about only being paid by outside consultants and reimbursed by, for municipal services, reimbursed. Meaning that we pay someone a salary, and then we, the township, collect money based because we already paid them. Not, they get paid and they get paid again. That's not the way it's supposed to be. That says it right there.
Just to clarify for the direction, are we not gonna discuss the existing ordinance in place that has the flaws? Or we're gonna discuss the state statute, which, I'm fine. If we're gonna discuss the state statute, maybe we should take a five-minute recess and have Jackie make copies for all of us?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a--
Again, I, I don't, you're referring to the state statute, I may not have read that.
Okay. So the three-week investigation hasn't even gotten to the state statute yet.
So we want to talk about the three-week investigation. Let's talk about the assistant town manager being on vacation for one week.
Got it.
And I don't know where you've been for the last week, but I've been in people's basements and cleaning up sidewalks and streets for the last--
Somehow you found chapter 19, though.
Chapter 19 was found in the first week.
Okay, all right. So go ahead, talk about 19.
I thought we were talking about the state statute.
You don't have it.
Okay, so we're not talking about the state statute, we're talking about chapter 19?
I guess so. This was your presentation from the township manager. So you're ready for 19? Let's go with 19, I guess.
No, again, I don't believe we have checks and balances in place for the planning board and the zoning board. My presentation to you is that maybe you are not aware of it, and you just found out about it tonight for the first time. But there is an escrow account, it's kept down in the finance department. Up until two, three weeks ago, every check paid out of the escrow account was done on a stamp machine. I was, I'm told that that's the way it's been done for years. I don't know the total number of years, the review hasn't told us. Is this issue a 10-year-old problem, a five-year-old problem, or a two-year-old problem? But the point I'm trying to say is, so, again, the invoices are being submitted. I don't know if anybody is reviewing them to, as far as to the accuracy of the invoices, okay? And there is no checks and balances in place, as far as I'm concerned, because it clearly says that the authority, I think one of, one of the, it talks about independent professionals and consultants upon vouchers duly submitted and approved the amounts so fixed by the approving authority. So again, is the authority the construction official, or is the authority the--
No, the approving authority would be the planning board or zoning board itself. Just like the council does a bill list. But someone's gotta give that bill list.
It also talks about, shall transfer the township treasurer, which, just as a point of clarification, I don't believe we have a treasurer in place by, by resolution or ordinance. I think Joe may have been, Joe Kavanaugh may have been the less. So we probably should address that too correctly, because this particular ordinance talks about how the township treasurer shall-- Because this particular ordinance talks about how the township treasurer shall transfer from the escrow account to the township general funds. And that's where you were talking about how we get reimbursed when we do work. If the town engineer or the construction official is doing work on a development project, those dollars and those numbers are reimbursed. And that money is paid back to the township, to the general fund. I don't believe that's being done. And I think, so, so what we did, what I said before, was when this was brought to our attention, we called a timeout, we suspended the account. And when I say suspended, no invoices, regardless of individual, company, engineers, have been paid and won't be paid until we have something in place.
In your review of Chapter 19, whose job is it to collect the invoices and present them to the board?
I don't have that answer handy.
I'm gonna give you the answer. It's 1913.2?
13.2?
Yep.
Sure.
Number one, A1?
A1? Go ahead.
You have it? 1913.2? A, number one?
The escrow account to be established under this section?
The zoning officer shall refer the applications with the maps to all the professionals. So, obviously, the zoning officer collects the information, he dispersed it. Number two, within 14 days of receipt, professionals must submit their estimates. You would think that since the zoning officer is issuing, the zoning officer then receives.
Could I just, just, and again, I'm just putting that out so the council can take it all in. So, it says, "Within 14 days after receipt, the professionals shall submit an estimate of the funds." Again, this is a escrow account that I have no knowledge of, that I have not worked with. So, I can't tell you right now that within 14 days that being submitted, which could be another flaw if, if it's not.
I don't think it's a flaw. I just think somebody's not doing their job.
But I don't know if it's being done or not. I, I don't know that answer.
Okay, I, I don't necessarily think it's a flaw. I just think the, the, the person in that title is not doing their job.
Okay.
And there might be a reason why that's not, that's happening that way, because there's something else going on. Sure.
Just a question, because you said it three or four times, that as soon as we found out, we halted the escrow fund, we, we stopped things, right? Not to continue this. Will that function still be done going forward as we...
We control it.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to, I'm hoping to walk away with, maybe, if it's not tonight, in a very near meeting soon, with a clear, uh, clear direction that we are going to sit down with the board secretaries, the construction officials, the chairman of each board, so that we're all on the same page. Because if we found out anything in this last couple of weeks, is that the right hand really doesn't know what the left hand was doing, because I, I mean, I made a call to a chairman, asked him a question. He didn't have the right answer, or he didn't have the answer. Okay, he didn't know the answer. So, again, that's...
But my point, but my point is, we halted that. I don't, I personally, I don't think the town wants to see things stop moving forward because of this. Meaning, you understand what I'm saying?
For other people to get paid as well, although this...
Yeah, I just want to see, I want to...
Is on the investigation.
And there, there's ways of handling that, and that's by taking the invoices and, and asking a chairman to come in.
What if we just...
And oversight by the CFO.
What if we just said to you, Mr. Manager, "We want you to make sure Chapter 1913.2 is being enforced." Because it's, there isn't really a breakdown. It says the zoning officer refers the application to the professionals. Within 14 days of receipt, they submit their estimates. Those estimates go to the board. It's clear who's supposed to be doing that. I don't think we need a deeper, I think you just need to make sure people are doing what they're obligated to do. And again, that's your job, so it's...
But I just said that we need to put the chairmans of each board...
It doesn't say anything about a chairman here.
It says the authority.
They have to, they have to...
Let's go back to what I said before. The planning board and zoning board.
I'm, I'm on the planning board, so I could, I could...
Planning board and zoning board.
Play how that works.
Must vote on all bills, just like this governing body vote, vote on a bill list tonight.
So, it has to come before us, the planning board, to do that.
Right. Or I'm not gonna put my name on it. If somebody else wants to put on their name on it, it'd be my guess.
You're not reading number one.
But who, who prepares it? Would it be the CFO again, like they prepare it for us?
Again...
Why don't we just read what it says? It says, "The zoning officer."
But that's only, that's only one step in the entire process.
No, it's not.
Sure there are, there...
That's just for the initial escrow.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not the bills.
It's that, the bill, it goes further.
Upon receipt of such estimates, the approving authority shall determine that the funds they consider to be reasonable and necessary to pay.
Once they're before us in a bill list, yes, but in order to distribute and get the invoices...
You're on number one, and I get it, and, and I agree with you. If you want me to say that it is, number one, it is the zoning officer shall refer development? Yes, it does. I, I, I agree with that. But I, but you have to take the ordinance into place. It later goes on to say, "Upon such receipt of such estimates, the approving authority shall determine..."
It's like a bill list, yeah. I agree with that. Okay.
So, I think that was the question. I thought that was the question.
No, but, okay.
Again, it's my name on something that clearly the town manager and the zoning board have no connection, right? The planning board and the town, I don't have the authority to appoint. And again, it is a little confusing, and I think you know this. The mayor and council adopt a budget with a dollar amount for, say, the planning board attorney or the zoning board attorney. But the mayor and council doesn't appoint the planning board or the zoning board attorney. The planning board does, and the zoning board does. So, again, I think there's a disconnect there as well.
No, I, well, the planning board's supposed to hire their own attorney, their own secretary. The, the planning board does make those decisions. The municipal council obligates funds for them to draw from, but no, the boards definitely vote for their own professionals.
Can you clarify how that relates to this in regards to funds? And, I mean, I understand your, your, your point about how there is a disconnect and who hires whom. But I'm just trying to understand how this relates to the portion of funding that has been dispersed.
Which part? Part about the...
That disconnect with their hiring their own attorneys with how this, you know, we're, we're talking about procedures, are we not? Are we still there?
Yes.
Okay, so, I would like to bring the conversation back to that, because we do know, have other things on the agenda. So, we walk out of here with some actionable items, because otherwise, what we're going to do respectfully to all the men here is just walk out with, trying to determine who said the most, but ultimately, we're not getting anything across. So, can we be a bit more specific as to what are we looking into here? We have this information, and we're trying to identify which procedures are not being followed. If we need time to read them, then maybe we just need to stop, and we need to consider, let's read this, let's study it. And in the next meeting, we all sit down with questions, because I find that right now, we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
That's the first step in investigation. You have to know what you don't know, and then that you don't know what you don't know, then you come in with the right questions. Because otherwise, this is just an argument, and it's a waste of tax dollars. It's not okay.
I'm fine with that.
So, I, you know, I just want to...
And I, I agree with you, Deputy Mayor, but now what happens is, do we have to go through this whole rice policy every time we're gonna talk about this?
I believe so, Counselor. If you're going to speak about an employee, you have to notify that employee that you're gonna speak to.
But if we're just gonna do policy and procedure, we don't have to...
If we're gonna do policy, if we're gonna just...
Well, those are two separate things.
Okay.
But because, but because this is now public, right?
I don't know.
We should, right?
Not, not by our choice, but...
No, not by our choice, but my point is, why would we have to go back to that drawing board every time? Because it's public now, right?
No, but the law is the law. I mean, if we're gonna speak about, if we're gonna speak about employees, the law. I'm just saying, again, we have to follow whatever the, the statute is...
What everybody's missing here, just, 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 let me say something here. What everybody's missing here is, ordinarily, personnel matters such as individual personnel matters has nothing to do with this mayor and council. This mayor and council does not discipline, does not, it's all your, it's all the manager's responsibility. Your purpose in advising the mayor and council about those three individuals that you riced was just for an advisory, an advisory circumstance.
I'm fine with that.
You, it does not, if you decide that everything was okay, and, and, and you just want to change it going forward, that's ultimately your prerogative. If you decide that, you know, there should be dis, discipline about, that's your prerogative. Everybody, public and otherwise, always discusses how this mayor and council doesn't do any of that. They don't get involved in the day-to-day operations. You were doing it as a courtesy to, to the mayor and council. And since you were gonna do it and raise the issue of individual employees, I advise you, you need to rice notice them. But ultimately, going forward, if, whether you would, the only time you would need to rice anyone going forward is if you were gonna do that again. Because this mayor and council doesn't give you direction and can't, under the Faulkner Act, give you direction with respect to what happens to an individual employee.
And I agree, I agree with what you're saying, and I actually thought I said that in, in my presentation to the mayor and council.
Right.
I, I really...
So, when, when Councilman Graziano asked that question, no, rice notices were only necessary because an employee was going to be discussed. And even the, and I, I actually, we were being overly cautious with respect to that, because this mayor and council can't do anything. But if there was going to be discussions, and there was going to be some opinions rendered by any of these mayor and council affecting any of those employees, they had a right to know it, and, which is why you gave them the right rice notice. So, in answer to Councilman Graziano's question, that's the only reason why you would have to do that. But ultimately, this mayor and council has no control over it.
And going forward, I think Councilmember Revell mentioned that, if, or Deputy Mayor, if we discuss a second time the policy procedures, we don't necessarily need to touch employees, therefore, there's no rice notice. It's just this conversation again. Your recommendations to the policies and procedures might come at the next caucus, and there's no reason, in my opinion, to rice employees, because we're not talking about specific employees.
There's no reason to rice employees, because we're not gonna speak about them. There won't be, and if we are, we have to rice them.
Right.
And it won't be discussed in the executive session either.
That's correct.
Understood.
It would be policies and procedures that the public should be aware of.
Whereof, that we're putting in place.
Anybody else?
We really should, to echo what Councilman Graz said, we really should get on this, though, because at the next meeting, because we do have a lot of stuff in the pipeline that could get held up, so.
And what I said before, I really want to put the chairmans of each board.
The chairman is...
I want the secretaries in the room. I want everybody in the room, because I, again, I want to go through, and again, we'll go through every single point and step in the...
Agreed.
Yes, it happened, but my question is, does it have to be...
He can do it. Can he, can you do it yourself?
Call a meeting?
No, no, I mean, I think Tommy, Tommy's trying to stop, he's trying to keep progress, right?
I'm trying to keep progress, but my point is this, I'll, I'll be blunt, right? So, if this is going on, everybody knows, the job can still be done based on the statute.
Agreed.
Is that a true statement?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, can I say something here? Based on the statute, absolutely, the job can be done, because the statute does not require the bills to be approved by the approving authority. The CFO can approve the bills for the developers. So, the statute does not require, our ordinance is a good ordinance. There are some inconsistencies in terms of one section and another. We have, it's duplicative, not inconsistencies. But our, our ordinance actually provides more checks and balances than the statute requires, which is fine. But the CFO, if, and, but the CFO just apparently, and you'll do this in your investigation, is, as to how that procedure was working, how, how these bills were getting paid. You'll do that in your investigation. But going forward, you can specifically direct the CFO to not only look at the invoices all and provide, and ask questions, or have you ask questions.
But I would strongly recommend not to approve anything until somebody else's signature is on it. Whether it's the construction official, whether it's the, the chairman of the board. Again, because just on what we're saying here, a planner can submit a bill for six hours and was only at the meeting for two hours. She's gonna put her name on it and said that the planner was there for six hours when he was only there for two hours? I don't think anybody would want to put their name on something like that, unless I knew that that person that put in for six hours worth of work did the six hours worth of work.
What I'm saying is, it was supposed to be included in the current structure of payment, right? That's what, that's what, this is what I, what I gather, right?
What was supposed to be included.
It wasn't.
About checks and balances.
The, the job that was being performed was all part of the stipend, correct?
Well, um, I can't necessarily say that. So, it, it, no, it was part of, it was part of the job as the planning, uh, doing the planning work that, because we don't have a planning director, do the planning work and the zoning officer work. It was part of that job according to ordinance, yes. All I'm saying, and my sole purpose in doing is, we don't, we may need, there may be some decisions after everybody reviews this, and we have a discussion next time, that the ordinance has to be changed. If the, we do not want these payments to be held up and this development to be held up, be...
I don't want to hold them up. I just want somebody's signature.
Right, right, I get it. So, what I'm saying is, under, we would not be in violation of, we would not be in violation of the ordinance if the CFO, in conjunction with, you know, you and the chairman of, the chairmans of the boards, to say, "Okay, was this done?" I mean, I, I, every law department bill that comes through, I look at, and I make sure that billing's correct, and the hourly is correct, and all that stuff, right? That's what you need to do, until you're in a place to sit down with the board secretaries, the two board chairman, the construction code official, who also serves as a zoning officer, and develop, so everybody knows what the procedure is supposed to be. And then you won't, in the long run, you won't ultimately have, have that, have the problem you had going in there.
I think we're all saying basically the same thing, so.
Counselor, can you clarify just one more thing for me? In the process of paying other developers, can...
Other professionals.
Other professionals, excuse me, yeah. Can we choose to pay certain people and not other people that are still under investigation in this process? Or if we resume paying for professional services, do we have to continue to pay while they're still conducting that investigation?
Well, professionals are entitled to payment, right?
They're outside.
So, so, employees, no, you don't, I mean, Anthony has already said... Anthony has already said that the employees were getting paid for things.
They're not putting in any invoices, so we don't have to worry about resuming it.
I think he already told them not to put in.
Got it, okay, understood. That's why I just wanted to clarify that there aren't any new invoices.
I'm talking about third-party professionals that the planning board or zoning board needs.
Understood.
Attorneys, attorneys that the, you know, the redevelopment attorney is, is, is an attorney that the township hires. But they're paid out of escrow, because the township has to hire them, and the township shouldn't be paying them.
Yeah.
So...
I'm, I'm not...
That's okay, yeah, that's, you know...
Funds that were supposed to, the township is supposed to get from the escrow account are happening in every...
Oh, definitely not.
And I think, and that's, you know, that's obviously...
We're losing even more money.
Right, that's something we need to address. So, so that, for, for instance, that stipend...
Is reimbursable.
That stipend actually is, for, for, in most circumstances, is reimbursable. So, that stipend that the township is paying, been paying, is...
Should come back through that account.
And into our budget.
Right, but understand what's actually happening is...
We're not doing that either.
Budget, technically.
Instead of us being reimbursed, that person is invoicing and collecting more money.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah, but we're not invoicing appropriately either, as, we're not, we're not getting our reimbursement, is what you're saying.
But again, Counselor, that, you know, that's, you know, the development is, now that there's more development, obviously...
It becomes more obvious.
No, it's right. Well, and it has to be addressed to, to, to straighten it out.
All right.
Straighten it out.
That's it, I'm good.
Well, there's a lot of questions, but for tonight, that's it. Yes.
Now, let's have a parking meter discussion. And again, just to remind the members of the public that are here, those watching and, and listening, this is a discussion among the, the council, our administration, our professionals. We're not being rude. We're not ignoring you, but this is really a conversation amongst us that you're here to listen to. Councilman Graziano put on the agenda parking meters.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, I'm just looking for an update from Anthony?
So, the, the meter that we identified, we did share with the council. It is a co-op, so it's, there's no bid threshold as far as we could pay through a state contract. And we just, we're falling a little behind on the 2022 capital, uh, capital budget, and, I'm sorry, thank you. 2021 capital budget. And what we said at the last meeting that we discussed the, um, meters, was that it is a capital expense and would be included in the 2021 capital budget.
For the, for the entire town, not just the parking lots?
No, no, straight down Washington Avenue. And anywhere else we have a meter that we want to replace or add?
That's good, thank you. And then the other...
Will definitely be in the 2021 capital budget.
Okay, and then the other one was the gasoline.
Yeah, Bobby did find a possible alternative. I think the last time I reported to the council, we were up at like $60,000, $65,000. We've, you know, I think Bobby found something a, a little less to consider. But again, whether it's $30,000 or $60,000, that expense would be included in the 2021 capital budget.
Okay, and then one thing that's not... Okay, and then one thing that's not here, and I got it, I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, you can't.
Nope, nope.
Are you serious? No, I'm going with this one.
Not the deputy mayor anymore.
It shouldn't matter. Again, Facebook, you believe halfway, you know, it is what it is, but I actually saw something that came through and I put it on my.
My three RBIs last night?
Huh?
The three RBIs I had last night?
Yes. There was, there was something that came from, I guess, I can't mention names, but it says, they spoke to the town manager's office on Thursday regarding bulk pickup, not storm damage items. Regular bulk pickup.
Not picking it up.
That was always the second garbage day of the week. I was told that the contract, that the contracted garbage company no longer does bulk, bulk, pick up. All bulk pickup is done now by DPW. So with the damages, we got pushed back. That was something posted, but my other question is this, I understand.
Do you want me to answer that, or?
No, that's my first question.
Go ahead.
So my other, my other question is, I understand that we're at a contract with our current garbage contract as of June. And I want to know the status of what and where are we going with that?
Two items on my manager's report that addresses that.
All right. Dials in, you're dialed in, Council.
Do you want me to wait till my manager's report, or you want me to answer? I think, let me just do my manager's report when I get to that. But it does include both the bulk cleanup and the contract.
So the next, that's good then? You're satisfied with that? You'll hear from him in a bit?
You're going to get the answer.
Tell me it's going to be addressed, yeah.
Because I was even going to say it too. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the report of the manager.
First, let me start off by thanking the PBA for allowing me the opportunity to play in last night's softball game. It was, it was a privilege to play and I was happy to contribute three RBIs. So, and I know it's great to have the manager's report go first because in the mayor's report, he will report that I had two and a half errors, which I only think I had.
How many errors?
Two and a half, but I think I had one.
We played two games against Puerto Rico, he was the MVP of the first game for Puerto Rico.
For Puerto Rico.
Three RBIs, I had, three RBIs, okay. Not to take anything away from the mayor's report, because I know he always includes all of the upcoming events.
I do.
The Green Fair and Community Shredding Day this Saturday. Community shredding day is always a big day in Belleville. People really, really come out and get rid of all those confidential and personal things. You get to see everything shredded in front of you. So I just, I just wanted to emphasize that. It's nine to 12 over at the senior rec building on Franklin Avenue. Again, Bobby's here, Chief Minikini's here, and Chief Alareer is here. What these three guys have done in the last, I guess it's maybe close to 10 days now or so, with Hurricane Ida, we're just, just, you know, above and beyond. All three departments have worked their butt off. Our Public Works guys are still out now until 6 o'clock during the week. We still have a Saturday crew working out specifically and Sunday crew. So again, you talk about a hurricane, New Jersey experienced over, I think it's, the number's up to 20 something deaths. I mean, we received over 10 inches of rain at one point. Obviously, no infrastructure can hold that. So, you know, seeing people's basements and things of that nature and, and the amount of property that they lost was, was, you know, obviously devastating and sad. But again, whether it's police, fire, and certainly hats off to Public Works, they have been doing a phenomenal job. And it's, it's really nice that we're getting emails now and phone calls of people really appreciating and seeing that, that work done. Sticking with Hurricane Ida, we were, Essex County was very fortunate to be declared a major disaster declaration area. So we've been getting the word out, people can go on the link, but the most important information that I can give you about FEMA today is that they have contacted us, they haven't given us the actual date, they're going to shoot for two dates where they're going to do a similar to a pop-up tent. Silver Lake got hammered, so maybe we might use the Friendly House. And then another day, we'll pick a different section of town, maybe closer to Main Street. So we'll have FEMA representatives in the Friendly House to help go through the whole application process. They haven't given me the date, they haven't really confirmed that they were definitely coming into Belleville, but they said that they were going to try their best. So whether it's at the senior building or the Friendly House, we'll have representatives there. And another day, we'll pick another section of Belleville and the FEMA reps will be there. And again, we have to get the word out to residents that FEMA is there to help assist, answer questions, help with the application. So that's very, very important.
Real quick, so the, so we have a link and there's.
The link is up on the website now.
FEMA, you can make a claim now.
People can go on right now and start the process, but we're going to have, again, knock on wood that these representatives, they said that, you know, they, I was trying to get the date today from them, for them to actually give us a date of when they are going to be here. But once that date is, we'll get the location and the word out. Solid waste update, so there's a couple of components here. First, let me just talk about the existing condition of going on. Again, going back to Ida, I don't even know what the total is. I tried, started to put some numbers together, we're over 100,000 Public Works alone, I didn't do police, fire yet, so that number's going to be big, right? I'm not there yet, and we're still spending money up until 6 o'clock tonight, we're still spending overtime, we're still spending containers. But what's going on specifically with solid waste, before I talk about the actual contract? We have private contractors dumping containers in sections of town so people can get rid of their damaged property. We have a container down in the yard with a grappler. I was going to take a video and put it up on the screen. The grappler is this machine that just crushes furniture and other material, and it just crushes it, and we could put, we have a 100-yard ton container, and that just makes life easier. Because every time we fill up a container on the street and we take it to the dump, those guys are sitting in line anywhere from two to three hours because every other town is, is sending stuff to the, and, you know, all the towns have experienced damage. So when people say, isn't it the responsibility of the current contractor on the second day of his garbage to pick up the bulk? The answer is yes, we have not excused them for that. But we all know, and there's no surprise, that the current contractor has failed on every level, whether it's recycling, whether it's just regular solid waste, or whether it's the bulk on the second day. They can't even finish a route. And again, I don't want to give you the excuses that I can, they can't keep the manpower, they can't, you know, they have one person on a truck instead of three, it's just, it's really bad. So the answer is no, we have, and again, we're spending money that we're pretty comfortable saying that we're going to get reimbursed. So we're doing our best with the bulk, but this is coming to an end. Let's hypothetically say, starting Monday, hopefully, we go back to the regular schedule. So your regular schedule is, if your garbage is on Tuesday and Thursday, and you have some damaged goods, on Thursday you put it out, and we're going to keep our fingers crossed that the current contractor who's failing us picks that up, okay? We've documented this, we have pictures, we have videos, and that leads us up to where we are with the status. This governing body took the initiative and we hired a solid waste specification specialist, so to speak, a consultant, that, that's all he does, Wayne DeFeo. Wayne is about a week away, matter of fact, there's a conference call with the superintendent, myself and, and Steve, I believe, Tuesday or Wednesday, 10 o'clock. And the, the bid spec should be done at the end of next week, which gives us the ability to put it out. We have to, it's a 60-day bid process, so the 60 days. So it's going to probably bring us into December or January, knock on wood, that we get a successful aggressive bid. We'll award a contract hopefully in the beginning of December, maybe the end of November, maybe, beginning of December, and, you know, give the new contractor and the old contractor maybe two or three weeks to do a transition, and probably somewhere around, you know, I would love to say December 1st, but the reality of it is, it's probably January 1st where hopefully we have a new contractor, somebody new, full of energy, that wants to do the job correct. Because if you take a look at the existing contract, they fail on so many levels and it's, it's just terrible. So for me to say they're picking up the bulk on the second day, they're probably not because they can't even finish the regular route. But that didn't stop us from jumping in and helping the residents. Every day we're getting to some, some great stuff. And then.
And before you move on, real quick, when we do that contract, is it, can we put in there something like a deduction if they finish the route and our guy can go out?
Exactly, I'm sorry that you finished.
Whatever, per ton or per trip or something?
Specifically, we hired this consultant to put together a, a spec that is going to cover us on every way, shape or form, because we're just getting.
I agree.
Before Hurricane Ida, before Hurricane Ida, garbage pickup was the most, most complaint.
In my report.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to hit some of this in my mayor's report.
Okay, so I'll just go on to the stadium project. Our geotech engineers have received the green light to go ahead and start working on the existing soil next to the football stadium. Everybody saw what the football stadium came out as a finished product, amazing. And now the soil, which is next to the football field, will be removed and that infrastructure, drainage, yeah, the next phase is drainage. And again, we're hoping for spring 2022.
Have we made arrangements? I know we had some, you know, it was serious flooding with the hurricane and everything like that. Have we made arrangements for the future that hopefully this drainage will take it away so we don't end up flooding into the high school again?
Yeah, we almost made like a pond for it by having the dirt there.
You know, I'll have that conversation.
Yeah, exactly.
Both the contract engineer and our town engineer, but the reality of it is, this storm happens again five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, it's going to flood.
There will be drainage, there's no.
Oh, no. The new field, that's the next phase. The phase that they're starting now is all drainage. I'm only going to say that drainage or no drainage, if we get 10 inches of rain in an hour, we're going to have a problem. But that's, yes, the answer to your question is yes. Thank you, and that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Moving on to the report of the mayor. First question I have, you or the chief, are we still under an emergency, I mean, really, Corbo would be the answer, would be the question, are we still under an emergency declaration?
You were right in saying, oh, we am.
Right, not here. Can somebody find out if we are, can we have that removed? If, because there's no longer a state of emergency. The governor lifted the state of emergency.
The county?
Yeah, COVID, COVID.
To the best of my knowledge, the last I S-Coder, the, it's COVID, as long as the county is open, we are.
The county is, the county.
And I believe the reason why the county is open.
When you say open, I know what you mean when you say open.
Ongoing, and it's still under, because we, we get those reports every day.
So, but, okay, I just, it's curious.
Yes, we are, I thought you were, I thought you were.
No, I'm talking about COVID, COVID.
COVID, the answer is yes.
Even though the governor lifted the state of emergency for COVID.
County's still open.
Okay, fine.
And they actually specifically asked us to keep us.
Okay.
I do know that.
I, okay. So Councilman Graziano, I too get garbage questions, and I've developed an answer that Bobby knows because he's usually on some of the emails and Anthony CC'd on them. I've developed a straightforward answer, I literally cut in pace, I get so many questions about it. The fact of the matter, the manager is exactly right, our current contractor has failed us. We are in a process now, we retained a consultant to do the bids, bids are out, or we're waiting on bids, it's a 60 or 90-day process.
The end of next week.
Right. The current guy probably realizes that he's out, therefore we're getting even worse service than we always did. But to answer your question specifically, in the aftermath of the flood, first of all, and I'm going to be talking about this in a split second, DPW did a fantastic job, but this township went above and beyond. We were providing dumpsters, our DPW was physically cleaning out, if you put stuff curbside, our DPW. Let me tell you, I had a conversation with Maro Tucci on Friday night, Nutley didn't provide any dumpsters, nothing. Note, you were on your own, you were on your own, Nutley did nothing. We, we went above and beyond with all the dumpsters. Now, my email answer that goes to everybody is, in the aftermath of the storm, Belleville basically monopolized most of the dumpster companies. You know how hard it was, Ant, to find dumpster companies. We monopolized as many as we could. The problem became immediately, day one, day two was a four-hour delay at the dump, then it became Saturday, Sunday weekend, dumps were closed, Monday was Labor Day, holiday, dumps were closed. We had people ready, willing and able to drive, we had full dumps, we couldn't get rid of it. That said, in the aftermath, as we got a week in, day two, or the second pickup day is your bulk day, I got all the complaints, the garbage men finally came and they picked up, they picked up my cans, but they told me, no, I'm not taking the debris. Because they were making their own decision on what was regular household bulk and what was flood-related. Anything flood-related, they weren't touching. And who got yelled at? Me. Who did I, who had to write the emails? Me. So the answer was, on second day, they are responsible for bulk, but if they identified it as flood-related, they weren't touching it. But I do, I'll get into DPW in a minute. So the rest of my mayor's report, past events, I always do past events, upcoming events and news, past events. Summer concert series, a resounding success. I truly believe that this council will appropriate the necessary funds to make sure that happens again next year. Cannot tell you all the compliments we've gotten on that. This past Friday, manager touched on it, ribbon cutting for our new varsity field, again, capacity field, packed, standing room only, people surrounding the end zone, two Super Bowl champs were there with us to help us do that, they gave a great pep talk, I was in the locker room, they gave a great pep talk inside the locker room. OJ had us all riled up, Anthony and I are ready to strap on some pads and get out there with them. That's how interesting it was, it was really a good time. September 11th, I think the police and Captain.
Pignataro.
Pignataro took the lead and the MC, and our 9/11 committee did a great job as always. This year was a little different, 20th anniversary, I think everyone did a fantastic job. This past Sunday, I did welcome the seniors back to the senior center, I sponsored a welcome back barbecue for them, they've been itching to get back into the building, and this was like a welcome home type thing for them. We had four hours of barbecuing and food and fun, and it was a really good time. Last night, as Anthony touched on it, Belleville PBA played the Puerto Rican State Police, it was a great event, we only had about 48 hours to plan it. We were like the Bad News Bears, we had no, we were like an unregulated militia, we had no uniforms, we, we didn't have proper cleats, we had one bat that we were sharing, Sergeant LaSoho threw it into the audience at one point, that's on camera by the way. But a great job, it's going to be an annual event, I think next year, we've already talked to the PBA president, we're going to look to scale it up bigger and better, and I promise we will have uniforms next year. Upcoming events, this coming Saturday, manager touched on it, not one but two different green events, our first ever green fair at the high school, I'm told I have to take a picture with a rain barrel, first time I've ever taken a picture with a rain barrel, but I will do that.
In it, in it.
I'm going to go over the falls. We're also doing the shred event, so two, two events the same day, green shred day and green event. Information's on our website. October 2nd and 3rd, townwide garage sale. October 9th, our food truck festival is back. Did we ever get a definitive answer?
No.
No, okay. So our food truck festival is back, October 9th, it's going to happen October 9th, we're not quite sure of the venue yet, but October 9th, it is back, we're definitely looking forward to that. Library, there's a whole host of events happening, but this coming Thursday, we're having a Cuba event to stand in solidarity with our Cuban friends to our south, please join us there. There's a Mad Science Lego event, a ton of ESL happening, all kind, and actually a really good one, it's going to be Rumors with Francesca Bacardi, she's a Page Six gossip reporter. We have her in Belleville to discuss gossip columnist stuff, interesting. A lot of information, check out the library website. Real quick, today I'm missing my sister's 60th, I'm sorry, 50th birthday.
Oh, my God.
I'm here and she is in number eight school for a, a home and school night, so both of us are missing her birthday. DPW, fantastic, absolutely fantastic job. Our police and fire get all the accolades, a lot of times they deserve every one of them, if not more. DPW rarely does, and as Anthony mentioned, I received most of the complaints, and every once in a while, a compliment slips through my filter somehow. And I always forward them to Bobby. Not only are they acting, not only are they responding, but if they say they're going to get to something in two days, in two days, that resident's emailing me to thank me, and I, of course, forward that to DPW. They've done a great job. I will be hosting in about two weeks, a happy hour for the guys and the women. It's going to be happy hour with the mayor, just to thank them, and obviously, I know you've already spread that word, so they've done a fantastic job. FEMA has declared us a major disaster area, links are on our township website. Registration is now open for fall recreation sports. If case you missed it, on Sunday, August 22nd, Belleville was featured in the Sunday print edition of the New York Times. That went international, people in Europe and other continents were reading it and commenting on it. I urge you all to Google Belleville, New Jersey, New York Times, and you'll have a chance to actually read that for yourselves. In the aftermath of the storm, I did tour many neighborhoods that were flooded. I was, I hit every major flooding neighborhood, probably. You've seen my post, you know that Bridgebrook lost 200 cars. You'll also know that it's very difficult to find rentals these days. You'll know people on Fairway had six, seven, or eight feet of water in their basement into one or two feet into the first floor. It was just troubling. I went to Suzanne Court, I went down the Valley section, I was in Silver Lake. It was really bad, and I think that we all did a great job, and I have to say, the residents overwhelmingly were understanding that usually I show up and I get yelled at. And they're angry, they just want to take it out on somebody. And I have to say that it was a little bit of that, but the people actually knew that this was a difficult situation, and they all acknowledged every single one of our departments that stepped up. I did not usually, big snowstorms, myself and Anthony, ride along with the police or DPW, I've ridden along with Bobby. This was such a major storm, I did not want to be in the way. I just didn't want to interfere with anybody at all. So, I spent the night listening to my radio scanner and I've shared with the chief, the calls on the police radio alone about people being potentially swept away, hearing them shout that we need boats, hearing them scream at a woman and nine-month-old baby trying to climb out of the roof of their car to stay put, hearing them, or that they've located two people hanging on the trees on Mill Street and ordering them to stay still. DPW coming to the rescue of police cars that are stuck. DPW using backhoes to break windows in cars. That's what we heard, and I really do, I did share this on social media, but I really do wish the general public could have actually heard some of that and understood exactly what we were dealing with. And I'll add this, by the way, amidst all that, amidst all the calls, I also heard calls for domestic violence, which our police then had stopped rescuing people and go and be, not that we're making light of domestic violence at all, but they had to actually then still put on their badges and go into people's houses and do what they do in a domestic violence call when we had people literally floating down the street. So, you heard all that, and again, I commend police, fire, and of course, DPW that were called into emergency service. Have you ever broken a window with a backhoe before? You know, this was the stuff that was actually happening. And again, I can't commend them enough. I'm going to end my mayor's report, speaking about the storm with just an interesting story. I received an email, it's only a couple sentences. The subject is floods on Continental and Fairway Avenue. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I have a nice story about our neighborhood. Neighbors who rescued my father from floods on Continental Avenue. My father fell underwater three times. He's 81 years old. A woman spotted him and her husband and a friend literally saved my father's life. They got him out of the water and they walked him home, all the way to our home on Fairway. With all the bad news going on, I felt it was a nice story and I want to share with you. It would be great to see them recognized. I've already reached out and we're already in talks for them. But that's a serious thing, but it's a nice story, but I'm just going to make light of it for one second because there's been a follow-up to this story. I've since learned from the family that the old man who's doing great, he's 81 years old, he's doing great, when he initially fell in the water, he lost his teeth. His teeth fell out. Interestingly, the next day, his teeth were found on a different block, I'm sorry, a different street. So, not only did he fall in the water and he lost his teeth, but his teeth were actually recovered the next day on a different street. So, I end my mayor's report with that. Next item on our agenda is committee reports. I see Councilman Gracianno already has something on. Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just would like to share with everybody that we are now in another phase of technology. As you know, over the past two years, three years, we updated, we upgraded all desktops, laptops for all of the employees at each one of our locations. We went ahead and we upgraded our network to an MPLS network. We cut over all of the sites except we're just finishing up on the fire headquarters. We just have to put something up in the cloud there. But now we're in another phase of joining or bringing together our voice component, which is our phones. What that means, what does that mean? Right now, every one of our locations are on their own phone system, and to dial each phone, to dial each unit, if you will, DPW to town, to fire, whatever, you have to dial all nine digits. That is going to change. Right now, we put hardware in for the firehouse and DPW. It's cut over, it's added to the network as of today. We are going to, in 2022, we're going to be going ahead and get the rest of our buildings, which will do what? It's going to give us four or five-digit dialing so they don't have to dial those nine digits. And it's also going to be, put us in a position to where we can actually record all calls if need be, and that'll be up to the town manager, whatever policy we put in place. So, we are moving, we are moving ahead. We've made a lot of progress, as you can tell here, technology. And I think we're in a, I know we're in a really good place as we are today, so if anybody, council had any questions, you're more than welcome to ask, but.
I just have one quick question. It seems like we're getting more stable here with what's going on here. Are we able to do a hybrid meeting yet, or we're kind of still working on that? Where we can come in and do the Zoom and doing, you know, other stuff? Just in case, I mean, for me, I'm probably going to start traveling again, and I want to be able to at least attend a meeting if I'm, you know, if I'm out there.
The answer to your question, in my opinion, no, only because these, this was all, the audio/video upgrades were all planned, obviously, prior to COVID. And we didn't even think that we would have to have a hybrid. I'm sure it can be done, it might take a minimal additional investment, but I'm sure it could be done.
If it's something that we need to, if we need to look at after we talk?
Something we should look at.
We should look at, but it will be additional because what we did is like the mayor said.
And I do agree, I think we are very, I think everybody likes the edit functionality that we provide.
So, that is my technology update.
Anybody else? Committee reports, first time in a month, anybody that's got something to say, something that they've been working on, pet projects, and they've been up to, now's your chance. No?
There's just one thing, Mayor. Along the same lines as the PBA softball game, they're also hosting, the same group is also hosting a community softball game on Friday, I think, Jackie, what was it? Do you remember what time she said?
Friday, 6 o'clock.
Friday, 6 o'clock. Do you remember where?
At school number eight.
At school eight? So, I think all community people are welcome to come and play the?
Play and see.
I guess they're going to play the Puerto Rico State team and?
Yep.
Yes.
See if anyone could beat them?
Good. We actually beat them in the second game.
I know, I heard.
They had their C squad in, but.
Yeah. That was the bad boy and like the mom and the dad.
Before we move on to approval minutes, one other comment, I did mention the fact that Bridgebrook lost 200 vehicles and access to rentals is very difficult. I do want to thank our partners in the Board of Education. Dr. Tomko immediately stepped up and said, whatever you need. I said, we have a need, we need buses. And we didn't want to take necessarily our CDL drivers, so Dr. Tomko immediately, I think, Tuesday after Labor Day, provided transportation for everybody to and from supermarkets. So, again, thank you, our friends on the Board of Education. Next, we're, finally, the clerk's going to have some work to do. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes.
Combined conference and regular meeting of February 23rd, 2021.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion made, and second clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gracianno.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Schumacher.
Yes.
Mayor Mulham.
Yes. Next item is communications.
A letter received from Fire Chief John Oliver recommending the members of the Belleville Fire Department on their professionalism and bravery during the storm of September 1st, 2021. A letter of thanks sent to John Mason for his generous donations to the township of two albums showing the life of Township Resident Henry J. Mason Jr. while serving our country during World War II. Request received from the residents of Carpentry Street to conduct a block party on Sunday, November 7th, 2021, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Request received from River of Life Church for permission to conduct an outdoor service on Sunday, October 10th, 2021, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. on Horblower Avenue between Home Street and Clearman Place.
Should we pull it? I'm going to pull it.
Okay. Those requests for block parties are always forwarded to the Police Department, Traffic Division, and thank you, Chief Oliveri, for your letter advising us, you know, what your team, men, went through and everything they accomplished. Thank you for that. And I have taken the opportunity to look through that book in the clerk's office. It's quite interesting to see letters written from somebody overseas fighting a war. Very interesting. Okay, next item on our agenda is ordinances. Ordances for introduction.
An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the township of Belleville, Chapter 8 through 16, handicap parking spaces.
Make a motion, introduce.
Second it.
We have a motion made, and second for introduction, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gracianno.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Schumacher.
Yes.
Mayor Mulham.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 3490, creating permanent positions and adopting reclassifications and compensation plans.
Motion, introduce.
Set.
Motion made, and second for introduction, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gracianno.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Schumacher.
Yes.
Mayor Mulham.
Yes. Okay, we're moving on. Next item, I need a motion to open public commenting.
Make a motion.
We have a motion made, and second to open public commenting, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gracianno.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Schumacher.
Yes.
Mayor Mulham.
Yes. Okay, we're at the portion of the meeting for public commenting. I will invite anybody interested in speaking to please come forwards, state your name and address for the record. Residents have five minutes to speak on a topic they may have heard today or anything they want to discuss, the weather, the chief soup, maybe.
Mayor Mulham.
I like that, chief. Mr. Fran Antoni.
Brown.
Just make sure that mic is on, please, sir.
I believe it is. Double check. Just tap it. Up.
I see a red light flashing.
Push it up. Go ahead. One second. There. You got it?
It's the worst thing about cordless mics. We'll give him your mic, Ant. You can share with Councilman Ravel.
He's been talking.
You're done.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, at the beginning of the meeting, I showed the mayor and councilman and the town manager a picture last week, you paved Valley Street. A couple of meetings ago, I told you that we're using the cheapest grade of asphalt with the big stones, it don't hold up. After a couple of years, the water gets in those crevices, freezes, and pops it up. I showed you the picture, Mr. Mayor, my printer was broken, so I couldn't print it out. I will get it. But it's so big, I think the next grade will probably be three-quarter inch gravel. I mean, this is unacceptable. And you're not, now, what are we doing? Who's drawing up these specs for these things there? Washington Avenue. The state held the meeting here a couple of years ago, they're going to do one lane in either direction. Is that still on? I have called, my wife keeps calling down there to protest this. You people got to take some action. I've been taking pictures. We can't have one lane in each direction. Just this morning, we're coming back from shopping, up by the Jiffy Lou, the liquor store, is getting a delivery with a giant truck across the street, the Pet Supply, whatever it is, is another tractor trail. I got two, you can't move. Next to my laundry, he, that restaurant is doing a great business. He gets six, eight, 10 deliveries, no, he gets bags of rice, they're there 20, 25 minutes unloading. What do we do when we got one lane of traffic? It's a disaster. Last Friday, my wife and I went to Jersey City shopping for a washing machine, and on the way home, the traffic is horrendous at 4:30. From Skyler Avenue, Belleville Avenue, 23 minutes to get to Washington Avenue. There's, you know, we keep building these human cages in Bullfield and Montclair, and now we're in Belleville and all that, and nobody's, you can't expand the infrastructure. I've been saying this for years, people don't realize Belleville is almost a landlocked community. Only two ways to get across the river, the Park Avenue Bridge in Nutley or our bridge. We can't handle this traffic. Try to get out of Mount, 54 years, I used to be able to go out Mount Prospect Avenue out to Belleville Avenue. You can't get out there anymore. In the morning and afternoon, impossible to get out there. Parking on Mount Prospect Avenue, I'll bring it to the chief privately later, but it's around town, but my street, this guy parks across the sidewalk, right up to his garage door, almost all day and every night. There's one lady who walks her grandkids, has to go out in the street with the carriage, day or night. In regards to this flooding, I was 18 years a trustee of the Passaic River Coalition, I was the Belleville liaison to keep track of it, and in just one seven-year period, all the building that was done, we had calculated over 1.7 acres of Belleville through development of two family house apartments was paved over. We're losing our purview areas. Now, it's getting worse. This flooding, there was just a report out, and number one, I've been yelling about basement apartments, I gave Mr. Iacona the warning, I hope to put it in the tax bill by the way our online budget, it's now September, we still don't have a tax bill, but the, we keep paving over. Washington and Williams, every square inch up to the sidewalk is there. When I asked the consultant, the architect, where's the purview area? Oh, with her pointer, she had a look, way up on top of the plot plan, was about a half inch of green, right? We keep losing our purview. So, these floods, yes, we might be getting more rainfall, but I doubt it because I cut a newspaper article, we've had greater floods in 1897 in different areas and all. The reason we have more damage, more billions of dollars damage, because we had put more buildings and people in those flood areas. I and Passaic River Coalition, others fought the Passaic River Flood Tunnel because they wanted to bring the water from Wayne and Lincoln Park down to us, right? We're successful in defeating that, but you gotta, you gotta stop all these things.
Thank you, Mr. Fran. We need you to.
And 80%, right, finally, 80% of all the deaths in these floods were from illegal basement apartments. I don't know if you heard the report, it's been on TV, it's been in newspapers. Are we going to start to crack down these basement apartments? They're all over town.
Thanks.
And attic apartments. Each time, nine people died in a fire in an attic apartment. Illegal attic apartment, they couldn't get attic, fire in the hallway, they couldn't get out. We have illegal attic and basement apartments. Are we going to wait for the newspaper to publicize the deaths? Or are we going to take some serious action on that? And the one action, that tax bill put out a strong, strong, not that little half inch, inch and a half inch piece of paper you put out the last time. I gave Iacona an eight and a half by 11, red letters, warning, illegal apartments. And let's prosecute some of these people and publicize it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fran.
Before we have deaths in illegal apartments.
Thank you. I don't disagree with you at all with the legal apartments and the attics, for sure. The paving specs, Anthony, I'm sure you look into that. I'm sure Tom Herritz types the specs. One, we got to make sure that the specs are correct. And two, we got to make sure that that's actually what we're getting from the contractors. And Mr. Fran Antoni, it's called road dieting. I'm not a fan of it. We're going from four lanes down to three. We're including massive amounts of square footage for bike lanes and everything else. It's called road dieting. I'm not a fan of it. We had, did have a public hearing here a couple of years back. It is on schedule, I think. Now they pushed it back to 2024, but I will continue to voice my objection to it. Anybody else public commenting? Sure.
Vic Manfucci, 61 Continental Avenue. I'm trying to read my scribbly. As far as the concerts were concerned, kudos to Mayor and Council, the police, DPW, fire if they were involved, and the Board of Ed. It was, they were terrific. I wasn't able to attend all of them, but the ones I did were very good. And yes, I would like to see it again. Oh, and the sponsors.
Most importantly.
As far as the hurricane and the flooding, again, props out to the police, fire, and especially DPW. I had minimal water compared to my neighbors right across the street. So for that, I'm thankful. The system where you could go online and put a comment in. Do I eventually get something back?
Yep. You absolutely should get a confirmation that we've received it and that it's either open or closed. If you call me in the office tomorrow, I'll go online and see.
Mine's, in view of everything, mine's not important. I just have a dead street tree.
No, but it's an automatic response. The minute that the broker looked at it, and you should get a request. I'd like to take a look at it.
Okay. I had just put it in and right away got a response. Thank you for submitting.
Oh, you did?
You get the auto acknowledgement that he sent it. He don't know the status.
Not the result. It's not closed yet, maybe. So you're looking for the result.
Again, in view of everything.
Got it.
One little dead tree.
Sure.
You know. Also, I think it would be a great service to the public in the future if you could also live feed the Planning Board and Zoning Board meetings.
We did one already for the Planning Board. We're, as Councilman Revelle mentioned before, we're really close to having all the kinks worked out now. And I do think that would be a responsibility of our Planning Board and Zoning Board Secretaries to make sure they know how to get it up and running. But that's, we did livestream one or two already.
Of course, in one part, they're probably just as important as this meeting. Of course, a lot goes on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, real quick, Vic. Just a quick question for you. I know that the base there, where it comes down off the carpet there, the content flooded again, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Max House, Jones House, they all got it, including Derek Corse.
And yeah, I agree with your comments about the concert. I will say that when we unfortunately canceled the 4th of July, the manager actually rolled up his sleeves. And a lot of towns use outside promoters, and it takes a while. Belleville was very unique that, I guess, his office directly engaged every single one and organized it. It was a, it was a good job, I think, Mr. Manager.
Great job.
Next, Mario.
Mario, 395 Bell Street. Oh, I was listening to the conversation about the construction code official and about his duties. So which reminded me of a contract that you approved for the banker group. Does he do the same thing? Or is that separately? Because if I remember the contract, he's supposed to be reviewing or dealing with the developers. So, oh, we have two people doing the same thing?
No.
Okay. And this is that question. All right, on the bill list, it's no longer on the, online, but I did notice that the O'Connor Law Firm, which is a labor law firm, they've been paid $38,000 in the last three months for legal fees. Is there any reason for that? Let me go on. You can answer that later for me, okay? And the other question I have, is the Belleville Fire Department fully staffed? Because I know we had a lot of retirements. And I don't know if this is true or not. As we know, I'm just asking.
Probably not.
Is, was there a list for the fire department? And it was thrown out, and they're starting all over? Is there any reason for that?
If it was true, we'll get an answer.
Well, I'll give you an answer later.
No, no, no. You can give me your questions.
I'm just using my five minutes right now.
Okay. I mean, I'm writing down your questions.
Yeah, I know you are. Okay. So I'm just wondering why that list was dismissed, if it was. Vaccinations. I'm concerned about vaccinations. When I walk in the town hall, I don't know who here is vaccinated, who up there is not vaccinated.
Nor is it.
Reason I'm bringing it up, I don't want to be near you if you're not vaccinated.
None of your business.
So, so you're not vaccinated?
None of your business, my status.
I know. But I'm just telling you, if you are, I'm asking you to stay away from me. Okay?
If I am vaccinated, stay away from me.
If you are not vaccinated, stay away from me.
Got it.
I want to keep you six feet away from me.
Sure.
Okay. I noticed that the two developments here, there's total of two bedrooms, 107 units, 28 units. And I don't know how many more. I didn't go through everything yet, but they're going to impact our school system, as I have mentioned in the past. And the last thing I have here is a number of times at the beginning of the year, in January and February, I've asked if, why the town wouldn't put a resolution about the insurrection of January 6th at the Capitol. Someone told me, I don't know if this is true, these are only allegations.
Usually those aren't true.
No, I don't know. I'm only asking. That's all I'm doing is asking. That, the reason for that is, well, I was told, I didn't even know it, that Councilman Casarelli is the Republican Chair in town. And I also understand that supposedly, allegedly, a former or a current employee was down in Washington. I don't know if that's true or not.
Not a crime, last night.
I'm just wondering if you're protecting, I'm almost, this is my last sentence. I'm just wondering if you're protecting this person and you don't want the public to know about it. So that only brings me to the one question. Do you really believe that President Biden is the President of the United States legally?
Yes, he's the President of the United States. I'll answer the rest of the questions.
I'm glad, I'm glad you're giving me an honest answer.
There's a reason why the insurrection resolution has never, I'm answering, so your time is done now?
Okay.
So there is a reason why the insurrection resolution was never on the council's agenda? Because nobody here, nobody here ever put it on, Mario? That's that question. Development schools, we're going to disagree with that forever. Harrison has built 3,000 more units in the last eight to 10 years and lost children in their school district. Vaccine status of anybody's, none of anybody else's business, in my opinion. Anthony, I have no idea what the question was or how to answer the fire department question.
We are a civil service community. Civil service takes to us. So they give us a list, they tell us how long this is. The norm is three years. The list sometimes gets extended for reasons similar to pandemic. The list expires when they say it expires. Normally, it's three years, and it's an automatic, but because of the pandemic, they have extended certain lists. So there is, to answer your question, we only have one list that has not expired yet, based on the fact that there was an extension. But tomorrow morning, civil service can call for the new test, and at that time, there will be a new list, and that old list is no longer.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So the.
The Russell issue 15, I forget what is that. That's what I'm saying.
Yes. And lastly, you mentioned, I can see that you and Councilman Revelle are on the same page with this law firm for $38,000. Councilman Revelle mentioned it earlier, even though, even though it was privileged, even though it was an executive session, even though it was supposed to stay private between us, Councilman Revelle did mention it in public before, about $38,000. So therefore, I can speak about it publicly, which is something I've always wanted to do. So I was accused of creating a hostile work environment from a specific employee. That accusation against me was forwarded to the township manager, our legal counsel. They decided to thoroughly investigate the claim, as I would not have any other way to do that. They thoroughly investigated the claim by hiring a outside third-party law firm. That law firm, you're correct, cost us about $38,000 to $40,000. And at the end of the day, I was not found, I was found to not have created a hostile work environment. So $40,000 of taxpayer money was wasted on an accusation that was thoroughly investigated by this township, and I was proven to not be guilty of creating a hostile work environment. $38,000 lost of your taxpayer money because of an accusation that we took very seriously, and we thoroughly investigated outside of this administration with an outside law firm. Cost us $40,000 of your money to show and to prove that I did not create a hostile work environment. Anybody else? Sir?
Santos Montina is Belleville.
I do need you to come forward, so you're on the microphone. Yeah, yeah. So I need you on the microphone.
All right, so several things. I don't know if we have the capability of.
I'm sorry, your address, sir?
Oh, 297 Belmont Avenue. I don't know if we have the capability of doing it, but it's that serious of an issue that now that I'm home more often, I'm starting to see, we have a serious speed problem, and our cars speeding up our block. Like, once they make that turn, and I said this in the last meeting, do we have the capability of setting up a speed trap? Because when they make that turn, they set my camera off from the vibration of them zooming by, because they step on it and they're gone. And then now school's open. So now, if we don't have, like, I'm not sure, I don't know if you can answer this, but the Board of Ed, I know I started to see now, they have safety services vehicles that they drive around, the same make and models of like of the Belleville cars. I don't know if, I don't know what their responsibility is, but maybe that's something that we need to bring up there, because, do we have the capability of setting up a speed trap? Is that possible?
We know, but a concern like this would, can normally just go straight to the Police Department. The chief would task our Traffic Department, one, with that responsibility.
It's continuous, and it's crazy. Like, these kids fly up the block. I mean, I don't.
All we're doing now is making sure the chief is hearing your concerns. If you want to just contact Police Department direct, we're not wait two weeks for another meeting, you can certainly do that.
All right, that's great. That's what they would do. Thank you. And then the other thing is, you know, our street got flooded pretty bad, right there in the corner. So I helped out, me and another neighbor of mine helped out a lot of residents in the area, pumping out their basements, whatever. But is there any way that the street itself, because I think the police can attest to this, but there are a lot more unintelligent people on this planet than intelligent people. So the problem is that they see a flood of water, and no matter how many times they are warned not to drive through it, then they think they can gun through it. So what they did is, as our streets got flooded and our basements got flooded, these absolute idiots pushed the water, I have video of it, pushed the water up the block and made it even worse. So in a time like this, and you know, is there any way we can close that street? Because that corner is susceptible to flooding. So I don't know if there's any way we can do that. I don't know how we could do it, if we could put it in our shirt pockets and think about it and get back to that and see that would be.
I do know that we do use DPW and police to close streets. Again, in a storm like that, a flood, it's a matter, it's a matter of, eventually, we do close them. It's just a matter of deploying resources.
Right, right, right.
Quickly and efficiently.
It's, it was, it was.
I agree with you.
I'm sure it was bad everywhere. I'm not, you know, the only one crying about this, but the payment procedures I heard going on earlier, it sounds like to me it should be regular SOPs. Like, why are we reinventing a wheel? I don't, should be like the normal accounting procedure. I worked in an office before. What's like so, like, we all sound like we're all like confused.
I think there's reasons why people.
There's an invoice, someone approves it, someone reviews it, someone puts it in for processing, it gets reviewed, and then it gets paid. No? I mean, call me crazy.
That's normal. However, when there's an invoice, when there's an invoice submitted that shouldn't be submitted, and that's paid out.
That's what I'm saying. That should be rejected immediately. Like, verify, if they sit there six hours of work, somebody who has the expertise should know, does it take six hours to survey this property? Or should it really take for a backyard, an hour? You know, so like, we have to also, like, I hope that's being done, and I don't know if it's being done for every department, but.
Procedures.
Reinventing a wheel here.
The procedure's important, and more importantly, is the immediately stopping of employees that are doing that incorrectly.
Yeah, because, you know, because in my experience, when things are vague, they're very shady.
Not vague, black and white.
You know, but I'm saying, when there's statutes out there that are vague, it's very.
Agree with you.
Open for, you know, issues. Real quick, also, there was a resident, I mean, a neighbor of mine, that their basement got flooded, everything got flooded. Real quick, I don't know if the town can force one of the owners of the property, adjacent property, because his backyard is like a pool, and it retains all the water. Then when it starts to drain, it affects the adjacent neighbors, and it floods their basement. Is there any way the town can force him to provide pumps in his yard to drain his yard?
That I'm not sure of, but I'm sure between.
Could I check with the dealership?
Or the Construction Code Department, they would be able to know.
I'll check with him. Okay. Last thing, the Friendly House, okay? So I helped Ms. Burke about two months ago. She had difficulty getting inside. She was passing by our neighborhood, and we said hello, whatever. She told us, long story short, we went over there, found a couple of very interesting situations. So one, I think, we really need to look at this tomorrow, tomorrow, because we have some very serious issues there. One, the back door to the Friendly House does not close. So anybody can get into this property, okay? Homeless people, crazy people, whatever, the door does not close. That's number one.
Let's not say it, you know.
Okay.
A hundred people could do it. That's probably something you should probably tell the chief, right?
So that's what I'm saying. Tomorrow, let's fix it. Don't wait a week later to fix it. Fix it now.
But you can call, just so you know, you don't have to wait two weeks for another council meeting.
Right.
You can call Ms. Burke.
That was going to be the ending question, like, what do I do when I see something like that?
You can go to Ms. Burke if you'd like, or you can just, he's manager, very accessible.
Perfect.
Email and on phone, he's very accessible.
There's like a couple of issues there. So you know what? I'll call you tomorrow morning, if possible.
Call or email, he's very accessible.
Because there's like, there were some open electrical boxes that are not locked, and they're supposed to be locked by code, where kids can open that and touch it.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to wait on that stuff.
Between 240 volt items, and somebody touches it, they're not, it's not a, it's not a zink. It's dead. You're dead. So I think there's some serious issues. I have pictures and stuff, I'll share with you gladly, so.
Thank you.
I'm texting the supervisor now.
Come here. So we'll talk tomorrow, and then I'll give you more.
We can talk tomorrow, but if you want, by home, we can make a call.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else public commenting? Sir?
I'm Christopher Kondrick, 333 Ralph Street. I understand that you're going to be developing the fields at nine school down around my house.
Upgrading the fields, yeah.
My house is surrounded by these fields on two sides. I know nothing about this, and till this morning, I saw the bulldozer in my backyard. I put in a call to your office three weeks ago. I haven't received any word back. Is there somewhere I can see a site plan of what's going on down there? I went on the websites for the town, there's nothing. I called the Department of Public Works, they have no idea. Called Board of Education.
Andrew has that.
They have no idea.
You're going to call me tomorrow, I'm going to track down, down it, and I'll email it to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Seeing none, hearing none. Motion to close public hearing.
We have one more comment.
Oh.
I'll read the one.
Thank you. I missed that one.
Did you read that one?
Alice Gasborough, 144 Academy Street. Please read at the public portion of the next council meeting. To the members of the Belleville, New Jersey Council, please be advised that on August 17th, 2021, I ask each of you to address the parking issue on Academy Street whereby Captain Kondrick of the Belleville, New Jersey Police Department cites as the reason for his police department's lack of interest in enforcing the laws that prevent harassing innocent citizens within the township of Belleville, which will curtail St. Mary's, St. Mercurius Coptic Church. Clientels are warranted, unwelcome, and alarming behavior against my family and myself arising whenever visitors to this organization refuse to move his or her illegal parked motor vehicle from across the front of my driveway when asked to do so. Since the Belleville, since the Belleville, New Jersey Police Chief Mark Minikini has seen fit to lock and bolt the police department's doors against my family and myself in this matter by asking that we seek a remedy for the crime of harassment elsewhere. And given the fact that each council member has failed to do as I had previously asked you to do, I would like to once more request that this issue of parking that promotes such hostile behavior toward innocent members within their community by visitors to a religious establishment which has its own parking lot, yet illegally parked across the front of someone's driveway to threaten the safety of children by refusing to move his or her vehicle addressed and resolved at the next Belleville, New Jersey Council meeting. Let me say once again, it must be distinctly understood that with each incident of harassment by this Coptic Church visitors, the threat to the life and limb increases, which places an inordinate amount of stress upon my family, who are no longer under the protection of the law enforced division of Belleville whereby cases of harassment are to be reported. That's it.
Okay.
Would you like to respond? You were specifically mentioned, if you'd like to respond.
Even last meeting, Mr. Gasborough was here. This was spoken about last time, Mr. Mayor. I've been in contact with Mr. Gasborough since June, maybe even before that, on the phone, spoke to him many times. I referred him to one of my police captains, and here's was the, he spoke to him, and then here's the letter he sent to Mr. Gasborough. I have been briefed with your ongoing concerns regarding the alleged harassment of you and your family at the behest of St. Mary's and St. Mercurius Coptic Church and their members located at 125 Academy Street. located at 125 Academy Street. I am also aware that you spoke with Captain Kondrick, even addresses that, at great length regarding this issue where he has personally, as well as had patrol officers, keep a continuous check of your home, 144 Academy Street, and the Coptic Church for any parking violations. Our supervisors also spoke with church leadership who assured us that they will make attempts by notifying their congregation to not block any residential driveways along Academy Street to address the concerns of their fellow residents. I will request that anytime you feel you're being harassed by a vehicle blocking your driveway, to please contact the police desk, 973-450-3333, or 911 if it is an emergency, as opposed to engaging with the driver or members themselves. As for your feelings of being harassed by a member slash members of this church on June 6th and June 27th respectively, I can have an officer come to you to gather all the pertinent information to complete a harassment incident report, or you can complete an incident report online by going to our department website at blah, 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 okay? Once you have decided your preference on documenting these incidents and these reports are completed, you can then contact the Belleville Municipal Court, and they post, post the hours, 8 to 3:30, and gives the telephone number 450-3319, and request an attempt to sign a criminal complaint for harassment against those that you believe are harassing you. Furthermore, you also have the right to retain a lawyer and attempt to sue the church civilly, as well if that is an avenue to which you would like to explore. If you have any further questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact Captain Kondrick or I. Thank you and have a great day. Sincerely, Captain Christopher Schrempf. Okay, so these issues are being addressed, he was advised on how to proceed respectfully in accordance with the law and is the.
Sounds good to me.
Okay?
Thank you, Chief, for that.
Through the chair, the chief. I just had a quick question. Mark, I remember they were trying to put parking in over there, but whatever happened with that?
He was one of the leaders against that.
Against putting parking there.
A parking deck that would have helped.
How's that? How's that? We just want that on the record.
The library was, yeah, yeah. And he was against it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Need a motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing. Motion made in second, close public hearing, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Casarelli.
Sorry.
Councilmember Casarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Revel.
Yes.
Strumulaberk.
Yes.
Mayor Maham.
Yes. Consent agenda, item 13, I'd like to pull off, please.
I'd like to pull 14 and 16 as well.
Seeing none, hearing no else?
Need a motion?
I will, need a.
Need a motion for the consent.
Right now, Marie, you good, Marie?
Yeah.
Good. Motion to move the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made in second to move the consent agenda, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Casarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Revel.
Yes.
Strumulaberk.
Yes.
Mayor Maham.
Yes. Resolution 13, just a roll call vote, please, motion.
You want a motion? Motion move 13?
Motion made in second for roll call for 13, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Casarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Revel.
Yes.
Strumulaberk.